I just put it.
I just put it. Put your back. Mayor, you're ready when you're ready.
All right, thank you. I need to pull up, I need to pull up my electronic version because I was on the. Oh, my God. Going to another tab. About who's. Scroll down. Okay. Awesome. You're the best. Thank you. Ah, here it is. All right. Thanks, everybody, for your patience while I get myself together here. All righty. You ready, Hector?
Ready, Mayor.
Okay, so it is six fifty and we will call the Talent See Council of October sixteenth order roll call please.
Counselor Coley.
Here.
Counselor Penemirav.
Here.
Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Pestejo is not present. Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Para Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Eris Blood.
Here.
Mary O'Quorm.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody? All right, seeing none. Item number three is community announcements.
Mayor members of the council, the holiday gift tree will go up at City Hall on November twelfth. The event helps local families have a memorable holiday season. For more information, contact Colleen Bradley at City Hall. This is an annual event that is organized by Colleen. Been with the city for about twenty seven years and has been working on this project each year. So there's going to be a gift tree in the lobby and we hope to populate it with contribution. Or is that appropriate? Leaf drop off this year is scheduled for November twenty fourth and December seventh. At the Valley View Transfer Station. They've consolidated that affair into one location that is their transfer station that's under a roof. I am like, my understanding they had an event here last year, previous years. They're moving all of that to their transfer station. Then City notices, although be a flyer about that in on the website. I'll get to Hector in, maybe you already have it. And there'll be information in the media about how that leaf drop off. City has up in a war today, but I'm going to cover that in the room when we're all. I, and RFP for Advanced Metering Infrastructure System. This is the new water meter. A system that will be installed in the city has been released. The RFP is on the city website. I believe the proposals are due in early November. So we will have a report to you soon thereafter, hopefully to award a bid and get this project that we've been. Working on preparing the specs for for a number of months out in underway by the end of the year. City is looking for an executive assistant, someone to work in my office to provide assistance as the. Level of activity is increasing. Interested candidates can visit the city website for additional information. Vacancies on city committees and commissions, a complete list of vacancies, and there are several. Visit the city website at cityoftalent.org. A great way to provide service to the community and follow an interest that you may have. On urban forestry or park planning. Great way to learn a lot. The general election, as you all know, is November fifth. And we have six candidates for three seats. We have any notices, the Oregon Department of Forestry issued a statement on October sixteenth lowering the fire danger level to one. Their lowest rating. In Jackson County Office of Emergency Management will conduct a test of their emergency notification system tomorrow. At ten seventeen AM through the citizen alert notifications. So sit your watches for that. That's all I have. On urban renewal, I wanted to, oh, one more thing. Is that we have a grant for the Bear Creek Hazard Mitigation Project. And. I was advised last week that we received twelve proposals. From different contractors, I'm going to take phase one of that project. Those pro, those proposals are being reviewed. The review committee includes two members of the RV talk staff. One is their environmental manager, city engineer Gaugen, and Daniel Collet. We drafted to. Participate in that activity, so hopefully we'll be able to have the results soon and get that project awarded.
I didn't catch what which project it was.
The Bear Creek Hazard Mitigation Project, that's the. The FEMA funded.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
A project, so underway soon, hopefully. On urban renewal, as you all know, the city received a award letter for the four point six million dollars to fund. The West Valley View Project. We're waiting for the grant agreement. But we're all already engaged in some of the preliminary planning for that project. The city has retained engineering services to do. The. A fifteen percent stormwater plan. That work is underway and should be completed by the end of the month. And we've been going through various other. Requests on OCHS to be able to. Get that project up and running. Soon. It's just a matter of getting the grant agreement, which is now going through various stages of review at the state. And that really is all.
Congratulations, Gary. That is a big win for the city and we're really proud to have that coming in and thank you. And the staff, all the incredible work that you've done, but I know it was a big lift, that one was.
Yeah.
Lot of, a lot of good work ahead of us. I also really appreciate the work that will be done on Dangness for that as well because that's such a, such a walkway for folks. It's such a shortcut to get over to like Legends and Dollar General and all these places. All right, so the next item on the agenda, if speakers heard on non agenda item and I'll just take them the way I received them. So the first speaker is Chris Loves. I assume he's online. We can elevate him and.
Hello, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Chris Loves, City of Phoenix. So tonight I'm going to be speaking about the matter that came before the Oregon Ethics Commission regarding.
Can you say your name and your city for the record and then? Are you speaking to the item that you have a written communication on?
Yes and no.
Okay. So this, so go ahead and state your name and your city for the record and then give me a second before you get started.
Okay, Chris Loves, City of Phoenix.
Okay. So normally what would happen, you all, is that I would ask the speaker to to wait till we're on the agenda item. But it sounds to me like he may have kind of a combination of both and we are, we are about to change these rules anyway. So I'm going to ask the council to relax the rules, so I don't have to adhere to the rules that are written into twelve point one. So that we can allow the speaker to speak on his item. Can I get a motion? Counselor Penemira.
I move to relax the rules.
Second, you have a motion and a second to relax the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Chris.
Okay, thank you. So tonight I'm going to go, I'm going to be speaking about the matter. That came before the Oregon Ethics Commission regarding ethics charges and violations. Of the public meeting laws by Mary Darby and City Council. So I would encourage everyone to read the final orders that are in tonight's written communications. Madam Mayor, you mentioned the violations of ethics matter at the last city council meeting, but not with clarity. So basically, just for the public to know, you did not allow a select member of the public to speak during the public comment period. Of a city council meeting. You said the reason was that there was a mix up or there wasn't clarity in understanding of the public speaking laws at that time. And that's why you violated the law by not letting a talent resident speak. I don't believe that. You did not allow the citizen to speak because of that. I believe you did not allow him to speak because of who he is. And the fact that he is sometimes a critic of you in the council. I also believe that if the announced speaker was a friend of, was a friend of yours.
Hey, Chris.
Yes.
Sorry, just a point of order.
Point of order.
In our current rules, I think we are not using this space and this time, this business meeting. For people to launch personal attacks. I think we specifically didn't allow that, if I recall. This, this does sound like a, just a personal attack.
Okay, so Chris, I, I want to let you continue with your comments. Certainly appreciate your point of view. And that you have a point of view, but I'm going to ask you to please refrain from directing your comments to. A person, to any individual.
Okay, I believe that if. The person that wanted to speak was a friend of the city council. Let's say a, one of Jason Clark, Emily Brillant, Joy Riley, I think you would have let them speak, Madam Mayor. But what I'm asking tonight is that you discuss the matter under the giant, under the agenda item eleven. And at this item be placed on a future agenda, so talent citizens may be aware of the ethics violations with clarity. Last meeting you spoke about it, but I don't think you spoke about it with enough clarity so the public knew exactly what happened with the violations. And maybe issue, I know you issued a apology to the person that was not allowed to speak. The general apology to the public could also be in order, I believe. And that's it for tonight. Thank you very much.
So since we relaxed the rules, I am going to just make one point and that is that I have, what he's asked me to do is reissue an apology to a person that I've. Already written an apology to and that person acknowledged and expressed gratitude for the apology, so I, I won't be doing that. And I'll leave it to the council if you want to add it to the agenda. Thank you, Chris. The next item of the. Non speaker, non agenda item is Susan Buzo, please come forward. Susan, I, I've pronounced your last name wrong every single time. Is it? Buzo, thank you.
I'm Susan Buzo and I live in Talent and you may, I'm going to stay for the whole part of the parks. And, but I, some of the things that I wanted to say about the Chuck Roberts part are, might not be part of the master plan. So should I say it all here? Or should I wait? Or please, I'm going to stay anyway. I can say part now and part later.
Well, if you want to take two, two points in order to, I mean, two, two timeframes in order to ma, make your speaker.
Okay.
Stuff, if you just stick to stuff that's not on the master plan for now and then you'll get a second chance later.
Okay, okay, I divided it up. So. I, I, my understanding of the master plan is you're going to put it out to bid and you're going to, I mean, you're going to try to find a grant. And it's going to take a long time. And the couple of things that I thought I just wanted to talk about. Before that happens, that I've seen for safety issues, I'm over there a lot because I have a dog and I live close by and I'm retired. So I just, it's my, it's my go to place instead of a coffee shop. I see a lot over there. I love it. One thing that I would love to see if, if the city could afford it, especially since we might be seeing more dogs in the park. You, you all know that even though the rule is on leash, there are, will be dogs off leash. You, you, you know, you're realistic about that. It's happening now. I would love to see like a three foot fence, like they have in cities around the, it could just be temporary, like they. Like they put in construction sites temporarily, only shorter with the gate. So that we can protect the kids that are in the playground from the dogs that get away from their owners, which I have seen. I, you know, I've seen dogs barreling toward that playground and I have, luckily, I've never seen any bad things happen, but it could have, you know, could. Number two, I just hope there's no plans ever to put any lighting in there. I used to live in Ashland and was down by North Mountain Park. And when the lighting went in for the sports area, it really affected the neighborhood. So I just want to put my. You know, we're getting bigger. I'd love not having lighting, just having it dawn to dusk. There seems to be an increase in trash around the picnic table area. It's picked up, you know, really. By the city employees, but there's a lot of play, there's a lot of birthday parties underneath that playground area. And there's a lot of, there's a piñatas and confetti and metal things, you know, it's like happy birthday. But those little things are really hard to clean up and since I'm retired and don't have anything else to do. You know, the stuff that's down there right now, it's going to probably take me three months. I, I try to get twenty little pieces every day. But, you know, if, I don't know what to do about it. If maybe post, I don't know. I don't know. It's a problem. I don't have an answer. And then I don't know if we're going to wait until we get the grant to do the master plan before we have poop containers. But I hope we get the poop containers soon if we're going to have dogs allowed to walk on leashes in the park. Would hope that we would have them in two places and, you know, separated. I pick up a lot of poop. And I'll save the rest till later.
Thank you. Good feedback. All right. I think that's it on, are there any non agenda item speakers in your email?
No, speaker request in the email.
Okay, very good. So we won't be taking any more speaker request forms for the rest of the evening and just be operating off of the two that we have. So the next item on the agenda is. Item five point one, which is a public hearing for Parks Master Plan Amendment. So I think I take the staff report first and then I'll open the hearing.
I have a quick question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we need to unrelax the rules or are the rules relaxed?
Yeah, you can just reinstate the rules. Can I get a motion?
I move to reinstate the council rules.
Second, you have a motion and a second to reinstate the council rules. Is there any, uh, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carrying. And, uh, this is a proposal, by the way, that I want to make, uh, when we revisit the council rules. But according to the charter, we are allowed to invite anybody to the diets at any time, uh, to join us in a discussion about any item that we have. And I know that Ted is here on behalf of the Parks and Recreation. He's the chair. Um, so I'd like to go ahead and elevate him so that he is part of the discussion. Uh, so Ted, what I'm, what I'm suggesting here is that you'll actually join us, uh, figuratively at the diet. And so you'll be free to speak on this item, uh, like any other council. Just raise your hand and you can join the discussion. Does anybody object to that? Alright. So staff report.
Hi, Mayor and members of this council. Uh, so Chuck Roberts Park has been one of the main parks for City of Talent. And as Susan mentioned, she spent a lot of time there, and I noticed a lot of the member, community members use our park quite a bit. So we spend a lot, a lot of time on trying to get it right, and that's why we tried to get them more inputs. We had a, uh, open house last Saturday. Ted was one of the organizers and with a lot of other, um, Parks Commission members volunteered their time. And, uh, so we got, uh, some inputs, and that's why we have this, um, public hearing again. So basically, um, we tried to, um, on August fourteenth, uh, the Public Parks Commission had a motion to approve for, uh, the revised master plan for Chuck Roberts Park. We have, uh, install the, uh, one acre fenced area for large dogs. And then we also relocation of the, uh, tennis pickleball courts. And I know the, um, pickleball courts has struck a lot of interest nationwide. And there's, um, community members called me to try to say when it's going to be, uh, implemented. So this is a part of the, um, uh, revision to move that over, um, next to the, um, baseball field. So we also want to add accessible, uh, children's play area, including toddler and, uh, us, um, bigger kids. And, uh, the labyrinth as well, and we also have the splash pad. We try to recycle the water that's in the plan. And we also want to add the two shelters, maybe just covered with a bench, and that's all listed on the, um, the plan in front of you, the poster. Anyways, um, that's all I have, Ted, if you have anything to add. Please do so, and any questions, welcome.
Thank you, Gao Ying. Uh, I, uh, the, the only minor, um, addition is that there's currently a backstop, um, in the field, um, on the, oh gosh, my directions, uh, up by Sawyers, so along River Parkway. Um, and, um, with the, um, tennis and pickleball courts moving to that location, um, the commission also recommends moving that backstop to the other side of the field to make the, um, soccer fields a kind of a multi-use um, ball sports area. But, um, and then I just, uh, clarify that the, um, toddler play area is already um, located on the twenty twenty Parks Master Plan, um, so it's more just for clarification that, that once the, um, the current tennis courts are, um, demolished and removed, that, that's where the, the, um, already already considered toddler play area would be. So, but otherwise, thank you, Gao Ying. Yes, great summation.
Alright. Any questions of staff or Ted? Uh, Counselor Colay?
Yeah, this is, uh, exciting to see. My one question is, it's my understanding that the existing tennis courts aren't functioning because it's really wet in that corner of the park. And I just wanted to double-check that the future play areas that are going in there, that's been taken into consideration, and it's not, not an issue.
So, uh, right now, the tennis court, um, because of the, um, subgrade underneath the, the type of soil, the expensive soil causing, uh, large cracks on the current, uh, tennis play area. And, uh, yeah, with, uh, we were for sure would demolish that whole area when we, before we install the new play area. Yeah, with the new play area, we will, um, um, put the, the designed soil, uh, into consideration and, uh, make sure that it won't cause any problem. Also, because we're not installing any, um, concrete. So that, um, the effect will be very minimal.
I just, just want to reiterate that, um, historically, that spot has been known for a high-water table. So, uh, just, I think it's important to, for, for, um, just to talk about kind of historical findings.
For sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Greider?
Is there, it looks like there's not any work being done on the basketball court. Is that correct? The, the surface there?
Uh, as far as my understanding, I, I'm not sure, yeah.
Um, I would say that's not, sorry.
Yep, Counselor Byer?
Uh, I would say that's not, uh, moving or adjusting or adding any new element. That's a repair to their current amenities. So that's not part of this re-envisioning process.
But it may be repaired.
It may be reported, repaired, yeah.
Okay, great.
Uh, Counselor Penamara?
Thank you. Um, so looking at this master plan, um, and also based on some of the discussion that happened when we had the open house, I think there may be, um, additional opportunities for landscaping. Um, for example, like around the new dog park. Um, my question is, is, is whether that's just kind of something that can be done after the fact. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be. It seems like a, it's kind of a minor detail. Would it need to be, um, in, in, considered in the master plan for, um, irrigation? I'm thinking trees, which would probably just not need irrigation long-term, but just, I'm told like three years, first three years or so. Not, I correct you if I'm wrong, Daniel, but, um, so is that, is that something that we can, could, could add in the future without having to make a decision tonight?
Uh, I think that can be added in the detailed design, and ideally it would be great to redo all the irrigation system as it's already aged and there's leaks being reported. And it's, uh, my understanding from my staff reports that, um, there's different systems even at the, uh, the whole park, the irrigation system wise. So it'd be good if we, uh, reuse the water for the splash pad. We can redo the irrigation system as well. In the same time, obviously, when we redo the, uh, play area, we'll be almost restructuring the, uh, the whole park. So it would be good time to upgrade our irrigation system.
Counselor Colay?
Yeah, I second that if any additional landscaping is going in, whether it's trees or, or other landscaping, um, especially around a future like high-use area like a dog park. Obviously, the Urban Forestry Committee would be happy to plant more trees in Chuck Roberts, but fixing the irrigation would be the number one priority for doing that. You can actually see on this map when you look at it, like, there is irrigation, but it's not functioning very well because there's a lot of brown spots and kind of odd shapes going on in there, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Alright, before I open up the public hearing, I just want to remind Ted that you are on the dais with us, and so you're welcome to join the conversation at any time, so I'm going to keep you, keep you with us. We're not going to send you back. Um, so if you have any comments or questions that you want to add to the conversation, don't hesitate to raise your hand. You are part of the dais. At this point in time, I'm going to read from the, uh, public hearing. Uh, script, uh, so I will now open the public hearing for the Parks Master Plan Amendment at seven eighteen P M. Are there any council members who would like to declare actual or potential conflicts of interest? Alright, seeing none, uh, we've already had the staff report. Uh, we've already had questions. So, uh, now we wish to hear from everyone who is interested in providing testimony for this amendment. We'll start by taking in-person testimony followed by online testimony by anyone who has submitted a speaker request to the city recorder. Please remember to state your name and city for the record, and, uh, I'll take it in the order that I received it. And so we'll go ahead and call, uh, Susan Buzo, uh, to speak on item five point one.
That was right, Susan Buzo. Uh, no, you did it right. Okay, so, um, I know this is in the future, but, you know, when the time, my mother used to say, when the pie is passing, you should take the pie. So I'm just doing it now. Um, starting at the end of my list, uh, because, um, Councilman, Councilwoman Ayers, or somebody brought up the, the basketball. I don't understand if we're going to do a big improvement, why you wouldn't put everything in there, but the basketball and the volleyball, um, it really needs help. It really needs help badly, and, um, they're not used like they should because they're in such bad shape. But, um, number one was to thank you guys for doing this and being so responsive to all the neighbors that have input. Just, I mean, I can't say enough thank yous to the Parks Commission, to the council, and to our police chief, um, who responds instantly if there's ever a problem over at the park. It's just wonderful. So the second is, um, the three-foot fence with the two gates for the accessible playground. I've already mentioned that. Um, I'm of an age where I really need benches to, to rest when I walk around, and there are already one metal and, um, three, three wooden ones, and we might even want to put in a couple more when we get more people coming. Um, but I don't know if that's in the plan or not. Um, I, I'm, I feel really hurt about the sound of the pickleball. Um, so, but I do know that some of the neighbors are still really worried. And, um, so just to put that out there about the sound, it's an ongoing concern. I, I feel heard. I think you're doing as much as you can. Wh- when you do the fence around the dog park, I was, I'm trying to think, I was in public health for years, so we're all about prevention of problems in public health. So I was kind of thinking about when you, when you do the large dog park and you're putting the fence up and you're putting the gate. You know, it'd be nice not to have a gate on the east side, which goes right into the labyrinth. Um, you know, put the gates on the north and, north and, um, south side, uh, where there's not so many people. Just for safety, because dogs do, do get away from people. Um, that, and volleyball, improvement to basketball. I, I'd wrap it in if I, if it was me, if I could. And then the, he mentioned moving the backstop, and he wasn't sure on the, um, the ba, baseball backstop, and he wasn't sure of the placement. But I'm hoping that they do it in the northeast corner, which would be closest to the accessible playground. Because that means that the balls will be going in the opposite direction, away from good people and away from the large dog park. If you put the backstop in the other corner, then people could be hitting balls into the large dog park or into the playground. And so, some people are really big hitters. So that was just an idea of placement. And I think that's everything, and I don't, I, I assume that, um, I'm hearing that this is all based on getting a grant. There's no funding for any of this.
Well, the city, uh, collects a so they collect a, uh,
Bean.
B on the utility bill that goes to Parks Maintenance, but there's really no capital fund that, uh, has been developed to the extent that these projects could be funded.
Right, that'd be great.
So that's a, um,
Counselor Byer?
Um, just on top of what Gary is saying, it's not that a grant would be written to fund the whole revision. Uh, park, the Parks Commission has actually done a lot of outreach to the community, asking them about their priorities of repairs or replacements or new features. And at the top of the list, right after the skate park, which is a different, in a different park, is the new tennis and pickleball courts. And almost parallel with that is the large dog park. And to answer your earlier question, this is a revisioning of where assets and amenities are located as opposed to a list of repairs to be made, which is the only reason why the basketball courts are not included in this list because it's a repair of an existing item instead of a new one.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
In terms of funding, uh, Gary, maybe you can speak a little bit too. So the master plan is like a five to ten-year plan, and then each year, um, things get built into the budget, so that when we do the budget process, um, the city manager looks into the master plans and, and prioritizes. In addition to that, uh, there are SDCs that we draw from, so, so you're right. And I'll let Gary to speak to this, but you're right, there, we don't just, and as to her, uh, Counselor Byer's point, there is, it doesn't get funded with a single fund source, but incrementally over years is the intention of a master plan. And maybe you can tell us a little bit about SDCs as well.
Sure, well, the master plan has a, a lot, it's not one project, it's a multiple project, so, uh, uh, there's not funding for the whole project at this point. Uh, we would be, just as we did with the skateboard park, we'd be looking at ways to fund it, using non-city funds. So the skateboard park, we have a combination of, uh, state grant funding, uh, and federal funding coming through the state that was allocated under the American Recovery Act. Uh, and those funds together will, will fund the skateboard park rehabilitation and some additions to that park, additional picnic area, uh, and a, uh, small performance venue. So, uh, as those funding opportunities become available, we, we now have a list of projects that we need to put values to.
Yeah.
So that when funding opportunities arrive, we can match that up with, uh, with a project. So it, it's a program that will take place over time.
Yeah.
System development charges are collected from new development and are intended to fund expansion of services. So as we add new elements, uh, to the park, those may be eligible for the use of system development fees that we collect when a new house is built or.
They would have to be new to qualify for the system development, new projects, not like repairs.
Right, right, so it's intended for, uh, infrastructure expansion. So that's.
Well, I'm happy to hear you're going to be working on it over time, because there's a lot of things that don't take that much money. They just have to take some foresight and planning. Um, so the public health hat is going back on minute, like, just a minute to, to, um, urge you to do the safety things, you know, the things that are safety first, uh, because you don't want to get sued, you know, and, and also we don't want anybody hurt. And, um, I should have said, we don't want anybody hurt, and we don't want to get sued, because that's much more important. Um,
I'm going to give you another minute, because usually we have about five minutes.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just give this example, uh, that I said, this is the last thing. It's just the example of the two dogs. It was so scary. There were, there were, this is about a month ago. There were two very large pit bulls, when we all know pit bulls are really strong, and they were young and wild, and they'd gotten away from their owners, and they were barreling down to the playground, to the little playground, where there were two and three-year-olds on the ground. And, um, the, the people got them in time, but that was really scary to see.
That is exactly how the prohibition of dogs in the park started back in two thousand one. Okay. And we have one more speaker request. And that is Daniel Champion. Please come forward and you'll state, oh, wait a minute, this is part item nine point one, I might be wrong here, Daniel, hang on one second. Yeah, nine point one, that's for nine point one, so hang tight, we'll get, we'll get to you. All right, so there are no other speaker request forms, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven twenty eight. So is there any discussion or comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Council buyer.
I move to adopt the recommended revision of the Chuck Roberts Master Plan.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the recommended revision of the Parks Master, the Parks Master Plan. Is there any further discussion? Council Colley.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's very nice that we have a dedicated Parks Commission that is putting the time into thinking forward about the future uses of the biggest park in talent, and I appreciate it and excited of any future tree planting that will happen there.
Council buyer.
I just, again, and I know, I know I have before, but again, I want to commend the effort that the Parks Commissioners have taken to gather public input. I also want to commend staff for all of the support that they provided in that. This, like, talent really values its parks, and it's always wonderful to hear as much input as possible, and it also is really maybe, maybe even more possible when you have such dedicated city staff and volunteers doing that outreach. So thank you again to the Parks Commission.
Yep, I also want to make a comment to you, Council buyers. You are steadfast advocates for the commission, and this has been a great process, and I really appreciate that you keep us updated. They're not always here to hear the, the good, the good words that you give, but you certainly do. And also, I think it's really important to acknowledge that, especially there's, there's so much misinformation in our community about, about our public process and, and people being heard and that sort of thing, and that's just another example of the many, many ways that the cities go out of their way to, to make sure that public has an opportunity to speak to the items that are before us. This was a, a public hearing, not just here, but also at, at parks. And, and the other remarkable thing that parks does so well is just, you know, the survey process, they really go above and beyond. And it just makes, makes us all look better, and we, we really appreciate all of the great outreach that they've done. Council buyers.
Commissioner Ploton Walker has a
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to, on behalf of the commission, thank you, but I just also wanted to recognize the many, many past commission members as well, but too many to name that have really are part of this process as well, beyond the current commissioners, and so all past and present commissioners, I just want to thank and commend, and thank you just mayor and council for kind words.
Thank you, Ted, that's a great input. All right, so if there's no further discussion, let's go ahead, and do we need a roll call for our master plan? We'll just take a roll call, roll call please. I don't think we do, but
Councilor Colley.
Yes.
Councilor Penemiroff.
Yes.
Council Greider.
Yes.
Council Persizos, not present, Council buyers.
Yes.
Councilor Parry Miller.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes.
Great, thank you. Not, not surprising, giving all of the, the input and the, and the work and what this project has been going on for, how long, Council buyer? A year?
Yeah.
Yeah, the amendment, a year?
A year, and then when you look at the information gathering ahead of that, I would say a year and a half at work ahead of that.
This is how we come to these, these easy decisions, really, really terrific work, thank you so much. All right, the next item is item number six point one, which is the city manager's report.
I think I kind of, kind of ran over my community announcements.
Some pretty exciting stuff, I don't blame you.
As I often do. So I, I, I don't have, well, I have one thing to report, and that is that we have, as you know, submitted the application for acquisition of forty-nine Talent Avenue for use as a community resource center to the state business organ for grant funding one point four million dollars. And we've learned that decisions on those applications will be made probably in the last week or two. So we'll know recent as to whether that project is competitive. Let's just have a brief update.
That's fantastic. By my math, I think we're, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven or eight million dollars in the pipeline of grants. Something like, yeah, 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 don't speak too soon, yeah, all right, fantastic. Item number six point two is the urban renewal activities report, are we done there too, as well, Gary? Okay. Next item on the agenda is consent for a calendar, is there any item on the consent calendar council would like to pull for discussion? I don't want to pull anything out for discussion, but I do, I do want to make a comment about our finances, because I don't think, I don't think this is said enough. You know, we're, we're coming out of a really tough time, and since the fire, since COVID, grant funds being just funneled into Southern Oregon in the millions, and, and a lot of jurisdictions are really, really struggling, we're seeing both of our neighboring cities working really hard to kind of restructure their finances, past due audits, fire district in crisis, financial, and, and talent stands well on its feet in good financial condition. And I think it's important to give credit where credit's due. Our, our future shifted when, when we onboarded Tessa DeLine, and I do want to point that out, you've done a phenomenal job keeping us in front of our finances and making sure that when it was time to tighten our belt, we tightened our belt, and Gary, you, you lined us up for that as well. And just really kind of need to acknowledge that we're in, and when we look around us, we're in really great shape. We, we definitely have had to tighten our belt, but that, that is a much better position to be in than, than, you know, three audits behind and, and trying to figure out how they're going to make it through the rest of the year, that's just not the position we're in. So I just want to give credit to the staff, and please make sure that the entire staff knows that we're really, really appreciate the great work that they do, and the yeoman's effort on their part to participate in, in, you know, tightening the belt, and then again, you know, Tessa just, just expert finance guidance.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion, there was a financial report in here, by the way, which is what, which prompted those, those comments. Council buyer.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, item one is the reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine eight five dash O. Allowing leech, leech dogs at Chuck Roberts Park, staff report.
The other game is returning.
So mayor and members of the council. So the Parks and Recreation Commission has recommended the city council adopt the proposed changes to ordinance two one six nine one four zero regarding dogs in parks. On September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the Parks and Rec Commission approved a motion to recommend that city council enact the changes to section eleven and twelve of ordinance twenty sixteen nine one four O as drafted by city attorney Dave Lowman. And all the other reports is in the agenda packet.
Great, are there any questions of staff, Council Greider?
I had a clarifying question.
Yes.
I've seen some wording here that says you know, allowing leashed dogs in the park, and then I do see this one line that says specifically leash dogs on pathways at Chuck Roberts Park. So can we just clarify that, is it just on the, like, gravel park pathways that they should be allowed? And is that in the signage that will go up, that specifically, is it worded that way?
I saw Council of Buyers nodding their head, I think that's what it is.
Um, may I
Yeah, Council buyer.
That is the intention of that wording. To the best of my knowledge, the signage would just have the ordinance printed on it, like the current one does right now. So whatever wording the ordinance carries, it was the wording that the signage was very
Any, Council Penemiroff?
Yeah, this is just a scrivener's thing, our, our ordinances begin with the year, so we see it a couple of different ways, two one six and two oh one six. I think it's supposed to be twenty sixteen, nine one four is just the number since the beginning of time, I think, of our ordinances. So just to
She's looking at the potential
Oh, yeah, I'm also looking at the ordinance itself, it references the old ordinance as two one six instead of two oh one six, I've just, just wanted to point that out.
Are you looking at the old ordinance?
I'm looking at the new ordinance.
It just has the wrong title?
Yeah, it has the wrong, yeah, it has it a couple of different ways.
So you can just pull that off of the agenda, whoever makes the motion, just pull it off the agenda.
Yeah, just instead of two one six, it's twenty sixteen.
Right, that's all. Any other comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion, let's see, Ted, if you have anything to add, you're on the diet still with us on these park issues. But then I'm going to excuse you after this one.
Just that, this, the, you know, we've, we've already come to the council before about this recommendation, but just reiterating that this was based on the twenty twenty-three Parks and Recreation Commission around dogs in parks, and this was based on the feedback of the community, the, the will of the people that dogs on leashes on pathways only in Chuck Roberts Park, not other city parks. Was preferred, and dogs off leashes in Chuck Roberts Park was not preferred, thus the recommendation of the large dog park addition. So just clarifying those points, just reiterating those.
Thank you for those clarifications, Mr. Chair, are there any other comments or? All right. I will entertain a motion. Council buyers.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nine eight five dash O and ordinance amending ordinance twenty sixteen dash nine one four dash O to allow leashed dogs in Chuck Roberts Park and to prohibit persons from leaving animal waste in city parks except in designated receptacles.
Thank you. Point of clarification, did I hear you say, I don't have the packet motion in front of me, did I hear you say it's a motion amending twenty sixteen? Is there, would, would this ordinance be replacing twenty sixteen? I don't think we're amending a, an ordinance, I think we're replacing an ordinance, is that correct?
I'm not sure, my understanding, there were other provisions in twenty sixteen that would remain in effect.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll look at that if, if I could, thank you so much. So I have a motion and a second.
We don't.
Oh, do I have a second? Yeah, okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ninety-five dash O and ordinance amending ordinance twenty two one six dash nine one four, I think it's twenty sixteen dash nine one four dash zero to allow leashed dogs in Chuck Roberts Park and to prohibit persons from leaving animal waste in city parks except in designated receptacle. Is there any further discussion? Council Colley.
Yeah, I think this is a
Thank you.
Good amendment to the existing ordinance. I do have concern about the enforceability of it, having been to all of talent parks frequently, frequently seeing unleashed dogs all around. Also an issue of unleashed dogs at the school district, at elementary school. So not against doing this amendment, but I would be curious to have a better understanding of whether or not this is actually going to be enforced, who's going to be doing that, or if it's how that's going to work, the effectiveness of it.
Council buyer.
At the moment, we just don't have the staff in part.
Right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, roll call, no, it's a roll call, but I have another question. So I'm confused about something here, if we're amending the ordinance, why are we changing the ordinance number?
It's a new document.
Okay, so aren't we really replacing ordinance, I don't mean to be stickler about this, but my experience would tell me that
It's my understanding that the original ordinance was not qualified. And that, that there are other provisions that are written in ordinance that would remain in effect. So you could adopt the new ordinance with all of the old in a, in just paying the insect, or you could adopt the new ordinance that is amending, not the same, in, in consultation with
Well I, I mean, it sounds, I'm, I'm just curious, I, it seems, it seems odd to me, but I'm sure that you guys have, yeah, they've worked all this all over and everything, so all those, let's see, roll call please.
Council Colley.
Yes.
Council Penemiroff.
Yes.
Council Greider.
Yes.
Council buyers.
Yes.
And Councilor Parry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right, item number nine point one is town hall restoration update, staff.
Yeah, we have Tessa in line, or in line, or
All right, thank you very much, I'm going to give you a high-level background regarding the agenda report that I provided to you in your council packet. Back in twenty nineteen, the Talent Urban Renewal Agency conducted a building assessment. Outline improvements to the building that included various repairs, ADA accessibility, and energy efficiency. The cost of the project at that time was a little over two hundred and twenty-two thousand and was to occur over a four-year period. Unfortunately, these projects were never completed, and the cost of the project has been, has increased significantly since then. In twenty twenty-three, an engineering firm was engaged to assess the foundation of the building. It found issues with the hundred and twenty-five-year-old foundation and shed light on the lack of a foundation on one of the additions. The section of the building that has no foundation has been placed directly on the ground. It was determined that the entire building should not be used during a high-wind event or at a time of heavy snow. Regardless, town hall continued to be used for meetings, the food pantry, and for a nonprofit office rental. In early twenty twenty-four, the twenty nineteen building assessment was discovered by newly hired city hall staff, and discussion on funding for the project began. Grant sources were discussed and grant writing started on, started on that project. In late spring, Tura allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the restoration efforts in its twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. A grant was applied to the State of Oregon Historic Preservation Office, and unfortunately, the grant was not competitive enough and was declined in early summer. In March of this year, the fire occurred in the basement of the building, and this caused all In March of this year, the fire um occurred in the basement of the building, and this caused all um. Uh use of the the business building to be ceased immediately. The talent. Historic Town Hall Restoration Project is broken into two very distinct pieces. The first piece um started at the beginning of this year and is based upon the twenty nineteen building assessment. The intention was to pick up the restoration efforts where the Ta- Talent Urban Renewal Agency left off five years ago. The second piece is focused on smoke damage resulting from the fire in March. Fire restoration efforts have been slower than anticipated. There's a tremendous amount of coordination that is occurring behind the scenes. We have um. Two insurance companies, we have an insurance adjuster, we have Surf Pro, the company who's engaged to do the restoration efforts. There are subcontractors and it's been pretty busy. Um but it seems like things have kind of stopped. We have um. As of today, most of the interior of the building and the contents have been professionally cleaned and are free of smoke odors. The bids for the drywall, plaster, paint, and electrical work should have been submitted by now and um. We're waiting on that piece. During the fire the fire restoration efforts, the City of Talent took the opportunity to remove equipment and cabinets from the kitchen. The decades-old griddles that were used by the Lions Club for Sunday Pancake Breakfast were removed. These griddles were considered unsafe and were in found in disrepair. During the removal process, materials containing eighty-five percent asbestos. Was discovered and this required special handling to be removed. Over the por- the course of the past few months, the tension from the twenty nineteen report shifted to the um pressing structural issues. The foundation, roof, and downspouts came to the forefront. Quotes were obtained for the roof and for gutter repairs. And after much discussion, it was important for the group to to ensure that the building was structurally sound before attempting any additional projects. So an RFQ or a request for qualifications was written and it's placed on the City of Talent website. Fortunately, there are um a number of companies who are interested in this work and hopefully by the end of October. We will have some companies to select from. After some discussion with staff, I do believe it was today, and discussion with the insurance company. When you work on the foundation of the building. We had planned on putting fixing the plaster um and repainting the building, but when you put when you fix. The foundation and you bring it up, you're gonna damage the building again. So we made a decision today to um put the plaster, the drywall, and the paint on hold. And um were you gonna be using the existing quotes that subcontractors have used? And I'm gonna give you an example. Let's say the plaster company um submitted a quote for fourteen thousand dollars to repair the plaster. We're gonna hold that. And after we're gonna lift up the 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 foundation of the building. Let's say they come back in and they say, wow, this is a lot more uh repair that needs to be done. It's gonna be twenty thousand dollars. The City of Talent will pay the difference from what the insurance would pay. So it's, we don't want to waste any money. We don't want to have double job um duplicate the jobs. So right now, that's um. Placed on hold until we finish the foundation work. The biggest challenge right now is money. Uh if we are uh concerned that the foundation work is gonna cost more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Tura. So as a result, the uh restoration efforts outlined in the twenty nineteen report are at a standstill. Um in the meantime, other items have come to the forefront. We have identified that we have roof dry rocked. Improperly installed membrane roof, rotting and broken stairs, broken slats, and we have water damage um. On the exterior of the building from the uh downspouts and the gutters being filled with debris. We have a um. I wanna say it's a big beam in the bat in the um between the uh original building and the nineteen fifty-four edition. It's that beam is sagging. Um we have a very large instant cedar tree that's growing right next to the ADA ramp. That's impacting currently impacting the ramp. The branches are filling the gutters with debris and are rubbing against the roof. Um the tree impacted underground pipes by filling them and clogging them with roots and roots and possibly damaging the historic rock foundation. In addition to the issues outlined um in the report, the building still lacks um smoke alarms. There is a quote, um um in the process of obtaining a quote for the smoke alarm system in the building, that's probably giving me another fifty thousand dollar bill for that. Um walking the grounds over the past couple of weeks, um it was noticed that the bell tower is starting to lean towards the south. That bell tower has a three-hundred-pound brass bell that's up in that bell tower. So that's something that needs to be addressed as well. The full cost of the restoration of the historic Town Hall is yet to be determined. It's estimated it might be about a million dollars. After the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is expected to be spent on the foundation. There's still roof and gutter repairs, and there's no funding mechanism for the finishing the job. It is possible that the foundation work will exceed the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the city in Tura will need to have to find additional funding sources. An aggressive grant writing um campaign will need to be embarked upon. And creative ways of ra- raising money will need to be thought of. Town Hall uh merchandise such as stickers and commemorative pins, you know, might be able to help a little bit with these costs. Um a recent idea is to redesign the existing grounds that around the Town Hall property and to sell bricks, park benches, maybe do water fountain. And trees to fund the renovation efforts. Donations will be aggressively sought, both in monetary form and in the form of construction services. Once the restoration is complete, a maintenance plan will have to be created. Um and then we're gonna have to identify a steady revenue stream in order to conduct these maintenance activities on an annual basis. Money will need to be also set aside for any future large repairs to the building such as a brand-new roof. A new roof on that building. Is probably gonna be well over fifty thousand dollars. The goal right now is to try to repair the roof, will make it last another five years in order to accumulate monies in order to um. Deal with the with the roof issues. And then finally, what's really important is that a decision needs to be made about the future use of the building. And that's something that City Council is is going to have to decide. By making that decision is gonna help guide the future construction efforts on this building or restoration efforts on the building. Does anybody have any questions?
An inspiration invited uh. A a group of of folks who are. Experienced with the building in the past and would have certain expertise to bring to the table in fairs and in. Yeah, architect and others to provide some advice on how to conscious approach some of these issues and. Um they've also had some discussion about future use of the building which. Some decisions about the future use of the building will help guide which elements of the project can proceed first. What uh what the interior treatment might be. And they have uh uh proposed a rapid joint meeting for the council with a workshop.
Can I ask a question about grant writing? So I know you mentioned in your report that uh we recently tried to get a grant and. Um and and the grant was we we didn't prevail in the grant, but that doesn't preclude us from writing more grants, right? Over the years, because I think like this isn't the project that that's gonna come and go with just one grant writing cycle. It'll, yeah, so you'll can, I mean, when we talk about this million dollars and raising money, grant writing will be a part, a continued part of that. Process, is that correct?
Correct. And what, you know, depending on. The the direction the council wants to go for the use of the building. Um let's say, for instance, you part this decide that the City of Talent would be like the partner with a local nonprofit. That may open doors for other types of grants to come into play. So but there's a possibility of that.
Great. I know there's been a lot of discussion over long, long, many years about that potential and different uses. Um so would we then um I I just out of curiosity, and then I'll give it to you, Councilor Byers. Uh would we then? We'll probably have that discussion earlier rather than, yeah, that'll be one of the first discussions we have, right? Yeah, great. Right, Councilor Byers?
Um to Tessa's point, I think that discussion with. Not just. Potentially nonprofits that might use that space, but also some real deep community input. Work for what is needed by the community could also help create a really competitive grant if we can speak with real numbers and real. Qualitative um input from community members as to what they need, what they need it.
Yeah, it sounds to me like the community engagement piece has already started. Did you assemble the group of people right from the community? Yeah, okay. Uh but you're talking about Town Hall halls and that kind of thing, like a workshop?
Yeah, I yeah, I'm talking about beyond the smaller pool of more expert people.
Yeah, I I wasn't discounting that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Community engagement, a broader community engagement should be required.
Yep.
Speaking of community engagement, I just want to be. Concentrate their time. I think we had a speaker on the.
Yes, we do. Okay. Anyway, uh so thank you for the staff report. Are there any more questions? All right, uh Councilor Perry Miller.
Thanks. So will the um will this recommending group of people, will their recommendation come to us in the form of a. Recommendation from staff since they were appointed by staff? Okay, great.
All right, uh so um if there's no further questions, I'm gonna go ahead and call uh for Daniel Champion. Please come forward. And when you get the microphone, state your name and city for the record. Damon City for the record. Thank you. All right, uh that's it on the speaker request form. Um. And thank you for the update. Are there any other last questions before I move to the next update? Uh so the next update is nine point two update on facility maintenance program. Seth?
All right, thank you very much. Um on September twenty fifth of twenty twenty four, Brad Walter. Also known as Doc, assumed the responsibilities of facilities maintenance. Doc has demonstrated dedication and initiative and has an initiative take. I can't even speak, I'm tired. Initiative taking approach to the City of Talent and making him an ideal ideal choice for this role. Um since then, all the city facilities have been toured and we have put together a draft. Preventative print preventative maintenance schedule and um. The purpose of having this preventative maintenance schedule is for uh assisting the city in safety and compliance, operational efficiency. Cost savings, asset longevity, and creating a positive um environment for the um citizens and for city employees. Um the fiscal impact on creating a facilities maintenance plan, right now, the payroll expense will remain the same. Um labor allocations will be shifted throughout the general fund, Parks Fund and Water Fund. And it's it's anticipated that about fifteen hundred dollars is gonna be needed in order to. Give Doc the tools that he needs in order to do the job. We're gonna be, we're in the process of purchasing like ladders, uh fasteners, hammers. Things like that. Um and all these items will be stored in a locked area in City Hall. Um a preventative maintenance plan is gonna will save the City of Talent money. It's gonna reduce repair costs, it's gonna extend equipment lifespan, it's gonna improve efficiencies. Gonna minimize downtime when things um are broken. And it's gonna give us a better idea on budgeting and planning. Doc is now working towards figuring out how much it's gonna cost to replace all the filters and all of our facilities. We're gonna be looking at. How much it's gonna cost on an annual basis to clean gutters, downspouts, roofs and such and such. There's a lot to do. Um the uh I'd say this program is in infancy and um it'll take us a few months till we get off the ground. Anyways, um any questions?
Thank you. Gary, have you used this program in other cities?
No, uh this is uh the first uh first time. Drive flight. And uh yeah, the the needs have presented itself in the organizational framework that we have. Presented itself as something that. We thought with staff, but could could work and improve our ability to be. Move our ability, but shift our ability to be proactive rather than reactive. Uh in dealing with the maintenance needs in all the city buildings, not only the civic use buildings, but. City we city-owned buildings that are leased to others. Uh which often.
city owned buildings that are leased to others, which often totally changing the HVAC system. They're all we care really for. But this was not on anyone's, not in anyone's area of responsibility. We were able to consolidate all of that into not just a position, but program and operating under TESN's supervision, which I think will help identify costs going forward and have a good industry process to correct what we need to do with what costs we need to look for.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Item number nine point three is Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero dash one, zero one dash R, authorizing new national flood insurance program requirements. Seth?
Is Rowan with us? So I'm going to introduce Rowan Fairfield from RBCO, who is working on this process to comply with the new national flooding insurance program requirements. And there's a resolution in the packet that she will address. And Rowan, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So just to quickly summarize what was in Gary's agenda report and in the two letters that I sent and in this resolution, there are changes coming to the National Flood Insurance Program, of which talent is a participating community. The short story is that FEMA was sued under the Endangered Species Act and because Oregon has a lot of endangered species of salmon, we are subject to these new changes that are coming. And there's going to be two phases. There's these pre-implementation compliance measures and then later we'll be getting the full implementation, which will be slightly different in ways we don't know how yet. So FEMA has offered us these three options for free implementation compliance measures that we can choose from and set a deadline of December first for us to choose. And this will be a pretty major change for anyone who owns property that touches the special flood hazard area. So RBCO decided it would be good to hold some multi-jurisdictional study sessions to really dig in deep to what these details are, so that it's a little bit more familiar to planning commissioners and counselors and staff. It is kind of a lot, it's a lot of information to digest. So staff has prepared this resolution to authorize us to attend these study sessions and prepare these ordinances that need to happen in order for talent to keep its good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program.
I do, I was looking for, it mentioned three pathways and I guess you have to decide on a pathway. I wasn't able to figure out what those pathways are. I don't know if that's too much detail to go in today or can you just give a real
Sure. So the three pathways briefly are a prohibition on all new development in floodplain areas. The second pathway is something called a habitat assessment, which needs to be prepared by professionals. It's a very technical thing and it'll be a sort of permit by permit approach is what they're calling it. And then the last option is they're releasing a new model code that FEMA has been working with DLCD, I think, to prepare to make sure that model code that the city might base its own code off of already complies with the Endangered Species Act and that will be how it meets that compliance. So total prohibition, model code, or a permit by permit approach with a habitat assessment.
And, all right, could I follow up? So the, so the model code would, yeah, I guess the model code would be somewhere in between those two.
Right, the model code would be very similar to the model code that you already have with some new sections added to accommodate the Endangered Species Act.
Okay, great, thanks. That was actually an explanation under a minute. Any other questions? Hey, I'll entertain a motion.
Counselor Byers? And this is about Resolution twenty twenty four dash one zero one dash R, declaring the city of talent's intent to comply with the new requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash one zero one dash R, declaring the city of talent's intent to comply with the new requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, yeah. Roll call, please.
Counselor Colley.
Yes.
Counselor Prenemroth.
Yes.
Counselor Greter.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Counselor Paramilla.
Yes.
Motion carries there.
Thank you. All right, item number ten is commission and committee reports. Who wants to start? Counselor Colley.
Urban Forestry Committee wandered around mostly this complex the other day and came up with some potential locations for future gateway trees. Hopefully, many of the trees at the gateway site will get to stay and will be protected with whatever future construction happens, but there's trees planted in front of every single trailer that will hopefully be able to be removed and replanted. So we passed that along to Gary and I think him and Gao Ying are working through that. Other than that, nothing new going on.
Do you know if the forestry committee is going to make a recommendation on where those trees should go?
That's what we, I think we're still working with staff on the logistics of that. And I don't know if that would come before council, before it was officially enacted, but.
Not if it's on public property.
That's what they're working on.
Okay.
Yep.
It would be nice, it would be fun to know though, when it, when it happens.
It's mostly around this area. So around the community center, around City Hall, there are some trees that probably need to be removed in this complex. That does bring up another note. I hope to have somebody from the Urban Forestry Committee do a presentation for City Council on the Emerald Ash Forest, which is a incoming pest that's going to kill all of our ash trees. Let's take care of it.
Wow, thank you.
First mosquito and.
Yeah. Anybody else? Counselor Prenemroth?
T-PAC met just this week and they had a presentation about the OSTA project. That's Our Stories Through Art and they're very excited about participating in that project moving forward with some other organizations, including the Talent Business Alliance, QualiCion Fortaleza, the Historical Society,
Make the City.
and Talent Maker City. Yeah. They had a question, Gary, about the status of the art donation and Dave had sent me a draft artist agreement.
I received the executed agreement today.
Oh, great. Awesome. Wonderful. Well, Donna will be thrilled. Well, the whole committee will be thrilled. And the last update is that the City Hall art has been updated and the new artist in City Hall is Nick Brezne and he's a local talent artist and he works mostly with oils. Anyways, it's really beautiful work. Encourage everyone to check it out.
Anybody else? And I think we have the big planning, or the big parks.
I don't know if you heard, but there was an open house this past weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, that was really great. I came in this again, but I heard it was pretty well attended throughout the, throughout the event. Counselor Penomra?
Yeah, Together for Talent met and mostly getting ready for the Harvest Festival where we shared a table with the composters out of Ashland and it looks like we're going to have composting opportunities for individuals in talent and it will probably be using for people to drop off composting at the Shakespeare Festival. Yeah, but it won't be the same day as the Road Food United, so it'd be a different day. And I think this is a subscription thing where you actually have to buy into it. So anyway, Together for Talent is excited about that and also excited about doing some education regarding fire wise, probably in a some sort of an evening community educational event.
Anybody else? So the planning commission meeting is towards the end of the month. So I'll give you, and the last one was canceled, so I'll give you an update.
Next week.
Next week. Well, I'll give you an update.
With us.
Gary, can I ask really quick, since we're on committees and commissions, there was a discussion about perhaps somebody from, did I understand you correctly? Correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody from the council joining the CAC that Bear Creek ninety nine, Highway ninety nine, is there any representation from the city there?
Right now, the Bear Creek Highway ninety nine planning process is entering at stage two and they are reactivating the CAC and maybe adding members to it. So I attended the meeting this week on that topic and they've suggested for members from talent business alliance and also helping on more, I think you were already on.
Was it Clark or you?
I was running senior.
Oh. Double A R P?
She left, she left, she said today, pretty heavy one.
It did. Okay, I'm not remembering senior advisory council? Oh, the senior advisory council?
Yeah.
But we're talking about a CAC for, I'm on the senior advisory council, yes.
Yeah, well, I showed you as a representative of the senior advisory council.
Yeah.
On the Bear Creek.
On the Bear Creek?
Highway ninety nine.
Well, they're going to reconvene, they're going to convene the CAC upcoming. So anyway, you're, we're.
Okay, was I at a previous meeting? If it was during the fire, I probably just forgot. I mean, during the recovery, I probably just forgot.
Anyway.
I went to a lot of meetings.
That's good information for everybody and I just want to make sure that everybody knows about it in case anybody is interested in. And.
Certainly, I'm the CAC, let me know. I'm not sure how many additional members there's going to.
Great.
I've got our list.
Counselor Byers? I'll save it till next agenda item. Okay. All right, thank you, Gary. It's good to hear that project moving along. Okay, now, item number eleven is other business and future agenda items. Do we want to, do you want to go before both of them?
Well, it's the first page of the look ahead. I'm curious what time this meeting is. For the.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, thank you.
And it is on Tuesday the twenty second, not the middle state the twenty third.
So I am going to say that we're opening up eleven point one, which is review the look ahead. And what's your question again?
What time joint planning and council meeting study session? Thank you.
Do you want to just go ahead? Do you want to review the look ahead or?
Sure. So you've got October twenty second, a special meeting, joint meeting with the planning commission and the council to hear the report on the buildable, buildable lands inventory final summary. Then October thirtieth, we have the committee and commission chair summit. We invite other, other commissioners.
What time?
That was at six.
Okay, great.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to talk about a couple of topics there, the volunteer liability coverage and we'll be joined by the city's insurance agent to talk about that and how volunteers need to how they need to fill out the form to make sure that they're covering when doing, when volunteering on city events. And we're going to be talking about biologs. I think we've mentioned before that biologs of some of the groups differ and I have a familiar discussion about. Then on November sixth, we've got a study session at five P M. On the council rules of procedure. Dave Lomond. Then on November sixth, on a special tour meeting, we'll have financial statements, meeting minutes, if they're available, but that's primarily to discuss the gateway health program. We expect a proposal from OCHS for implementation of the gateway health project on October twenty third. So we would schedule that for action on November sixth. And council agenda for November sixth is here. We've invited IB Can Do, representative of the presentation. I haven't confirmed, I haven't had confirmation back yet. Then the other items you see there.
We have a question. Counselor Breter?
It's the, is it the Illinois Valley?
Illinois Valley.
What is the, do you know what the presentation?
The mayor's work, the lady was.
Just the work that they.
It's about the peer grant.
About the peer grant.
For businesses.
Are they, they're appearing on November sixth? For presentation?
They were invited. They haven't responded yet.
Okay, all right. I thought, I just didn't realize it was that, that soon. Okay.
Yeah, they haven't.
A question on the chair summit. Shall we encourage the committees and commissions, even if they're not chairs, to attend? Okay, great.
So then we have on our radar, or no, November twentieth, a study session on campaigning with the city.
Do we have a time for that? Would it be five? If we have a tour meeting and council after?
Well, that is a regular meeting night, so it would need to be at five.
Are there folks lined up to to present anything at that or is it just a discussion?
It's, my understanding that the council wanted to hear from others.
Yeah, my, sorry, can I? My, my recollection was about best practices is what I was looking for. Yeah.
Counselor Byers?
And my recollection was it was best practices and knowing what the municipalities to the north and south of us are doing just so that we're aware of those decisions.
And how they impact.
And how they impact us. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Have not lined up a speaker. Hope to talk with some of them while I'm at the meeting.
So I want to check in with any of the council members. If you also have speakers that you feel like you want to suggest for this, that maybe you reach out, I think it'd just be easy if they can just reach out to you about it, Gary, and you can make that decision. Yeah, but so it doesn't have to come back to us, but I think that would be good. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest Echo Fields because she and Rich Roddy worked on the what they, what I've heard is a really good comprehensive plan about dealing with the unhoused in Ashland.
And what organization is with Echo Fields?
They are a committee of, they're a city committee.
For Ashland?
For Ashland. They've written a very, they've written a really great plan. A report, I should say, report, not a plan.
So what I'm recommending is that if anybody comes up with suggestions to just reach out to Gary and provide them with the information and.
Yeah, I'll shoot you an email with Echo and Rich. Yeah, great. All right.
So you can see what other things are happening following meetings. We are optimistic that at the council meeting on November twentieth, we'll have a and that you'll acknowledge the role of these. And that you'll be selecting the pathway for the National Flood Insurance Program. Then reaching out to December fourth, we've got awarding the contract for Town Hall Foundation work. Depending upon the right. And inverse of the vote. Hector?
That's on the fourth, canvassing the votes, yeah.
We need, I mean, the election results generally available right away, but we need the official.
Yeah.
Is it the first meeting of the year, is it the first meeting in January, when the, if there's new councils that work?
So you're with us to the end of the year. We're already missing your counselor. Counselor Byers?
Kind of on that note, and I'm not saying this, so we have one less meeting with you, but historically, we have only had one council meeting in December because people begin traveling and families begin arriving right around this time. I'm wondering if we want to plan for that and if so, if we want to move the tour regular meeting to December fourth. If that throws a wrench in the plans to win the audit, there's just questions, you know? Back to that.
So well, we have two meetings.
Do you want to compress them? Do you want to start to plan to compress them to one?
Cancel the one.
One of them is awarding the contract for the meter, which must be done before the end of the calendar.
All right, well, just know that we've done that in the past and if it changes, we're open for discussion. Counselor Penomra?
No, I was just saying with all this work and all these meetings, I'd not, I'd rather not compress, you know, since there's so much work to do. I mean, I'm here, I don't mind doing two meetings in December. So, so just suck it up.
Wow. Okay. And. All right.
If you have things that we need to add in here. There are several items that you've asked us about to bring back to the council that I'm working with staff to identify.
All right, any, so any other items? Does anybody have any other items and they want to agendize for future meetings? All right, item number twelve is, there's a written communication commissioned by Chris Love, happens to be the same records that we asked to be, both council president and myself asked to be put in the minutes earlier in the month after I discussed the item last, at the last meeting. And so I'm noting that the minutes are not yet ready, right? So happy to see him in the record again. Just don't, we don't want to lose sight of that because of the request and because of the discussion, the two discussions we had previously referencing these documents. All right, anything else? So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at eight thirty three.